Welcome, everybody. We'd like to go ahead and get this meeting underway. We're going to call this special call session fiscal year 2019-2020 proposed budgets to order. Has all the commissioners checked in present?
No.
We're going to have Commissioner Val lead us in a prayer and then I'll have Vice Chairman Creasy lead us in a pledge when we get started here and get everybody checked in. Okay, Mr. Jameson in Denneberg. Let me borrow one of those.
Oh, yeah. Just hold on to it.
Representing different districts. That would have been interesting. All right, Commissioner Val.
Heavenly Father, we again come to you and thank you for every blessing that you send to us, Lord, giving you all honor and praise and thanking you for saving our souls and for helping us each and every day. Please forgive us of our sins, times, Lord, that we fail you each and every day. We pray, God, as we enter into this meeting, that you'll be with each heart and each mind. We pray, God, that you'll counsel with us, Lord, that we'll seek your counsel as we make the decisions that you feel and we feel is better for the people of our county that we represent. All this we ask in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Val, and thank you, Vice Chairman Creasy. I'd like to just get started and kind of cover the purpose of the special call meeting. And not sure everybody has an agenda, but I'll just read from it real quickly. There's only two items on here, but the purpose of the special call meeting, time allotted for elected officials, department heads, and citizens to address commission concerning the proposed budget as recommended by the interim finance director, Mr. Robbie Holbrook. It's not all on you, though, Robbie. Other item is discussion amendments and adoption of the budgets for fiscal year 2019-2020, including any resolutions required or related to the budget and/or tax rate. So those are the things we'll be discussing, and hopefully we'll come out of this meeting today with a budget passed. If not, we'll have another meeting down the road. But the intent of this meeting for the full commission, we're here to hear the recommendation from the Budget Committee and move forward in some capacity. So as it relates to people that might want to talk, we will offer you that opportunity once there's a motion on the floor to have input and discussion. Now, if any of the commissioners feel different, I'm open to your suggestions. If you'd rather have people come to the microphone first and be allotted three minutes, we can do that as well. But I just want to have an open line of communications with all of us. Commissioner Scott, I see you. Yes, ma'am.
I was going to ask that the Finance Director interim explain what this is prior to folks being able to stand up to the microphone so that there's a better understanding.
Yes, he's definitely going to do that. But my question is, after he does that, would this body rather us have a motion on the floor before people speak, or would you rather them speak right after Mr. Holbrook gives his summary?
Motion for discussion.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner.
It's all right.
Commissioner.
To allow members of the public to speak for three minutes, maximum three minutes.
Before we take any kind of...
Before we take.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's your motion. Anyone's going to second that one?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion on the motion to allow people to speak before we go take up any motions on the budgets itself after the Budget Director interim gives us his presentation summary? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I have a question, and it may have about the tax rate that's suggested by the Budget Committee Chairman, and it may have some bearing on what the people may, or what the people that's going to speak may speak about. And the Budget Chairman, Commissioner White, has set up for us to consider three cents for the sheriff, three cents for the schools, two cents for employee raises. That comes to an eight cent tax increase. And I'd like to ask if the trustee, correct me if my math is wrong, an eight cent tax increase, I think, would increase the taxes on a $100,000 home as assessed in Oak Ridge to be, I think, $20 per month increase in their taxes.
Not per month, twenty a year.
Per year is what I meant, yeah. Did I say month?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my old age's coming out.
Yeah, per year.
I had a birthday last week. So, yeah, $20 per year. Is everyone agreeable to that? Is the trustee agreeable to that? Was my math correct? Is it $20 per year for a $100,000 home?
Eight cents close.
Very close.
Okay.
$100,000 times .25 times .08, and that would be the number.
Yeah, the way I figured it, it was 25 cent per penny per year for a $100,000 home in Oak Ridge. That's the way I was figuring it. So, okay. All right. Now, we're on board with what that's going to do to our yearly tax bill for a $100,000 home in Oak Ridge. It's differed in Clinton and differed in the county.
If it's eight cents, though.
Yeah, if it's eight cents, yeah.
Okay.
All right, that was the only thing I had.
So we got a motion on the floor to allow people to come to the microphone for three minutes after the Budget Director gives his interim summary as presented as it stands. Is there any other questions on it? Commissioner White, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to correct something that Mr. Creasy said. I draw up a piece of paper or a suggestion earlier today. That is not from the Budget Committee. That was strictly from me.
I think that's what I said.
Well, let me correct that because that's not from the Budget Committee. That was, I think I meant to say from a member of the Budget Committee.
You did.
Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification. Okay, so Commissioner Anderson.
I wanted to see, are we just giving this opinion at the beginning for the public to speak, or will they be able to come back and speak when we are delivering on actual budgets?
Well, I mean, it's up to this body. I mean, I'm not going to tell anybody that can't speak. I mean, but what we're not going to do is, you know, spend an hour talking about things that, you know, our task here as a body is to pass a budget. And if we're not going to pass a budget, then we need to send it back and have another meeting to the Budget Committee, Finance Committee, and whatnot. But we haven't even got to the point of letting the Budget Director present his summary yet. And what I'd like to do is have that come to us before we start debating on all the other issues. It may be the budget that's presented doesn't pass. It may be it passes unanimously, and all these discussions are mute. We don't know that. But to your point, I think you know me well enough, I'm not going to tell anybody that can't have any say-so if we're going to raise taxes or not raise taxes. I mean, everyone here is going to get the opportunity to speak, far as I'm concerned. Is that satisfied? Okay. Commissioner McCamey.
I kind of agree with Josh Anderson here. If we don't have a motion on the floor, then what are they going to talk about? I think we need a motion either to accept the Budget Committee's recommendation for discussion and then let them speak because then they know what we're recommending.
We can make that motion next. The first motion we have on the floor right now is to let the people speak after the Budget Director makes his presentation, and then we can certainly take up another motion after that. I'm open to that idea. Any other discussions? Commissioner Mead, did you have another motion, sir?
I was ready to make a motion, but I do want to just say that Mr. Creasy may have been speaking about Oak Ridge because the proposed tax increase in our districts, all of Oak Ridge, is about eight cents.
I understand. Okay. Any other questions on the motion on the floor to allow people to speak after the interim Budget Director gives his summary of what's being presented to this body as we proceed into the meeting? All right. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One no. Motion carries. Mr. Holbrook, will you come to the podium and give us an update? This is Robbie Holbrook, interim Budget Director.
Thank you, Chairman. All right. In the paperwork I handed out prior to the meeting, there's a breakdown of each fund with proposed revenues and expenditures and a copy of the tax resolution and the appropriation resolution. I've also included a recap of the 18.25 proposed tax increase, how we got there, and explanation of the continuing resolution at the very end of your paperwork. I'd also like to recap for the audience the proposed budget. After three years of no tax increases, the proposed property tax rate is set to increase to 2.9728 per $100 of assessed value. This is an increase of 18.25 pennies. The value of a penny in the tax levy is approximately 162,000, and the revenue generated from this increase is almost $3 million. The most significant increase of 6.75 pennies on the tax rate is in the general fund. The sheriff's budget has a net operational increase of 1.3 million, which will include five new deputy positions, 12 new positions at the jail, which will allow the opening of all of Unit 1. There are three pennies set aside for a cost of living increase for general fund employees. A 2% increase is at a cost of $394,565. This will also fund an additional $90,000 to help with salary disparities that exist in Anderson County as we continue to develop a salary plan. The general fund capital projects fund has a proposed increase of 1.5 pennies to help pay for capital improvement needs in this fund. This is a step in the right direction, but not nearly enough funding to cover the increasing costs needed for this fund. This year's imperative priority needs total more than $3 million. The 2019-2020 budget proposal addresses issues that have a significant impact on the budget. The general fund and some other funds achieving balance, funds achieve balance in their budget by drawing down reserves. The general fund budget is balanced by drawing $853,256 from fund balance reserves to meet reoccurring operational expenses. Continuing to draw down reserves to cover reoccurring expenses is not sustainable over long term. Solid waste is set to receive one penny from the tax increase. This will fund two new full-time employees and also help with the increasing cost of waste management. The Budget Committee has approved an operating transfer of $280,000 from the self-insurance fund to fund appropriations requested from the Emergency Management Agency, which will fund the second half of a fire truck and 120,000 of additional capital needs. Changes made last year to stabilize the self-insurance fund have helped considerably. There is no increase for employee, there is no increase for employee insurance this year, and the incentive program has been added back. Fund 263 is projected to finish the current year with a balance of 1.3 million. Keep in mind, this fund is very volatile and can change quickly with increased medical claims. Last, the general purpose school fund is funded through a combination of sources predominantly from state and county taxes. GPS is set to receive an additional six pennies of tax levy in the Educational Capital Project Fund. This will help alleviate the budget deficit of 821,000 and fund numerous capital projects and allow employee raises. So with that, budget has been presented for the fiscal year 1920, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Robbie. Well stated and well laid out. Any questions for Commissioner Anderson, sir?
Could you just throw out a couple examples of, you mentioned $3 million in the imperative needs that we're going to spend, just a couple examples, and maybe, and then if we're not funding that with a tax increase, I'm assuming we'll have to take out a bond to cover those.
Well, just an imperative alone. The patrol cars are 450,000. There needs to be a new roof at the DARC complex. That's 450,000. EMS for ambulance, 515,000. And the voting, the election office is asking for new voting machines this year at a cost of 350,000. And the highway department has 834,192 for five trucks replacement of old equipment, five new dump trucks. That's just the major ones.
And so none of, and so none of that's really covered at all in this 18.25 cent increase?
There's only a one and a half penny increase in that fund, and it could possibly cover the smaller priority requests, which are 396,000. And if you subtract EMS, that would only be 266,400 for smaller, for the smaller projects.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. And again, Robbie, this is the recommendation from the Budget Committee to this body as it stands right now.
That is correct.
And then we're here to take action.
That is what the resolution, the appropriation and the tax levy resolution are indicating the 18.25% increase.
Just a question. If it was to change up or down, you could accommodate a new resolution rather quick.
I could try, as long as there's...
Sufficient time?
Right. If we go change every expenditure code and stuff like that, that's, it's not going to happen tonight, but...
Any other questions for the Director, Budget Director, while he's at the podium? I think we're good for now, Robbie.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, to Commissioner McCamey's and Commissioner Anderson's point, I see their point. We don't have a motion on the floor right now. We have not accepted the budget as presented. So, you know, it's hard for, to Commissioner McCamey's point, for citizens to come up and speak against something, we haven't taken action. And I see what you're saying. So, with that said, I see a motion from Commissioner Mead.
I make a motion to bring, to review all the work this evening before the commission as a motion.
Could you restate that?
Okay, and I make a motion, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the budget as submitted, and then it'll go for discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve as submitted for discussion. We have a second by Commissioner McCamey. Now, discussion, if any.
Can I clarify?
Sure, sure.
The intention of the motion, if I understood it correctly, is for discussion. It's not to approve the budget as presented.
Well, I kind of said to approve, and then that would lead to discussion, but for discussion, my actual intention was to make a motion to approve, then that would lead to discussion, but it was altered slightly, and I didn't object.
Well, I'll be happy to say it correctly because it's important we have the words right in the motion. So restate your motion.
I make a motion to approve the budget and the associated resolutions as submitted.
So your motion is to approve the budget as submitted. Okay. And does the second agree to that, Commissioner McCamey? Okay. Now, discussion. Commissioner Mead, do you have some more to discuss?
Yes.
Go ahead.
A couple of things I wanted to bring out. 1987, when I moved to Oak Ridge, the county tax rate, when I moved into my house I live in now, was $3.30. When I came into office in 2010, it was 268. And this resolution would change the tax rate in Oak Ridge, the county tax rate in Oak Ridge, to 267, slightly less than it was nine years ago. And I also point out that the substantial increases in the budget this year, one of the major issues of the Sheriff's Department, now, some of that is for cars and some, some people and stuff, but a huge portion of the money going to the Sheriff's Department is all required because the state has forced upon this county over 100 state inmates that cost the taxpayers of this county over $1 million a year. And we don't have any choice in that, that the state leaves them. We've tried to go to the delegations. We can't do anything. And so I think people need to understand that. And in the city of Oak Ridge, of that 267, two cents is going to the ambulance service, about two cents, which is critical to Oak Ridge because it supplies all ambulance services in Oak Ridge. 1.6x is going to the, is going to the Oak Ridge schools. Okay, a lot of people don't understand that the county also, also supplies money to the city schools. And so I see these things are all critical, and that's why I'm in favor of passing this budget. I think, I think that the Budget Committee has done a wonderful job, has taken this down to absolute bare bones. All the departments were required to stay with last year's budgets with only a few exceptions, like the Sheriff's Department. And I know, I noticed that the library actually has independent funding, has a little bit of increase, but not much. And the libraries in this county, I think, are critical to the welfare of the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Any other commissioners? Any comments? Commissioner Isbell?
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Anderson just brought up a good point. You know, if this 18.25 tax increase was to come to fruition, if it was voted in, we're still short $3 million for the things that's going to have to be done. So we're going to have to go in debt again issuing bonds to cover that. So yesterday, some of the people probably heard, and I've done a lot of speaking to constituents, former Budget Director, School Director, or, you know, Budget Director, and gave me some ideas about how to do things. And I'm not saying that the school don't need everything they're asking for. I agree with that. I'm not saying that the sheriff don't need everything they're asking for. I agree with that because whoever comes up to that podium, I believe wholeheartedly. But I also believe that we should do everything that we can to lessen the impact as much as possible. Now, we've got new revenue that's going to be coming in next year. You know, our revenue last year, if I'm correct what Natalie has said, our revenue was up $800,000 last year. Now, we're getting ready to start the Senate Sales Tax, all right? And I've been in contact with Lieutenant Governor McNally to see if the state has a valid estimate on how much we're going to be getting. Haven't got that yet. He may have sent it, and I haven't got it. But the Tennessean breaks it down, there's going to be $160.5 million coming in on the Senate Sales Tax first year, 59.4 million to local governments divided by 95 counties, and that's going to give us another $625,000 to use, okay? Now, the school, the school department gets, gets a big portion of, you know, and they should. And then, you know, the project that the trustee has got. If this works out and the issue's starting to invest that money, we're going to have income coming from that. That could be up to 400,000. You've heard that in meetings. Our property assessor, Johnny Alley, since he's been in, he's picked up another $8 million in additional things, you know, that, that's for, that's real property for appraisal. Right now, there's 253 homes being built or already been approved to be built in Anderson County, and it's going to be up $1,800. That's the estimate, it's about $1,800 a piece. I'm sure that Commissioner Meredith could tell you about some of the other plans for some, you know, big box stores and some other retail things. And that's all, you know, that's going down, going forward. And the ideas that, that I got from some of the constituents, one was back years ago, in 99, 98, there was a litigation tax that was in effect for capital outlay. This money was already put in. And this thing started, and I really want to thank Robbie for helping me put all this stuff together. I mean, I just asked him for it, and he found it. And I know they were covered up with the Private Acts in 1963. So we're talking about the people before us was pressed with the same problems that we have today. So this is what our forefathers thought about doing, exactly what we've talked about. Section 1, that a litigation tax of $3 shall be taxed as part of the cost in all civil and criminal actions in either, and I think I gave you a copy too, Mr. Chairman, and either the trial justice court, juvenile court, Circuit General Court of Anderson County can see that the clerk of the said courts will collect the said litigation tax and pay same to the trustee of Anderson County, Tennessee, who will place same into a separate fund, which is to be designated as Anderson County Capital Improvement Fund, with expenditures made therefrom by the county executive of the approval of county commission. And it was amended Private Acts 1983, Chapter 89, that all expenditures made from the said fund shall be made by the county judge upon the approval and authorization of Anderson County Court for purposes specified herein. And back then, the court was actually commissioned, so that's why it says court. That the county court is hereby authorized to issue notes and bonds for purposes specified herein and pledge the income hereof for the exclusive payment of the bonds or notes. In other words, that's what they were going to use to secure the bonds and notes. That this act shall have no effect unless the same shall have been approved by two-thirds vote of the county court of Anderson County, Tennessee, on before the next regular meeting of the county court occurring more than 30 days after its approval by the chief of the state. Its approval or nonapproval shall be proclaimed by the presiding officer of the body having jurisdiction to approve or reserve, and shall be certified by him to the Secretary of State that that act shall take effect and after its passage, public welfare required it March 18, 1963. And then if you go to, there's an amendment in 1988, 1998, 1999. This is an amendment, and on the bottom it says, after consulting with auditors, the county approved releasing a restriction of funds held in the general fund this year. The auditors identified litigation tax revenue that should be restricted in general fund for capital outlay. The restriction on these funds, or also tied those funds released in the prior year. Whatever happened to that money? And the point I'm getting to, and then he, you know, he gave me an idea about, about the court system helping to fund the jail, like if there was a $100 fee set on every court case, you know, if anybody, then that way, the court system or the people that's subject to go to jail, whatever, is actually funding that. Which if it's 5,000 cases, it could be, you know, $500,000. But these are just some of the things that I found in, of course, I know there's a motion on the table. But what my idea was, and I've said this yesterday, is if we had time to go ahead and hire a finance director, I understand we have got some really good applicants, and I know that some of them that has applied is really good. If, and I think we've got time for this, is if we brought that person in and let them look, because, you know, a fresh set of eyes always helps, like, you know, the constituents give me these ideas. And this come back, I think we've got till September and let them help us, you know, do this because they're going to be tasked with the budget from now on until they quit or fire them. But, but I know we got a motion on, on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Isbell. Appreciate the, the information and the research you've done. Any other commissioners? Robbie, did you have something? I'm sorry.
Just to comment on that, that money hasn't gone away. I mean, there's $98,214.83 in a restricted code. It, that $3 resolution generated $17,250 last year, and all of that was moved to capital outlay. So it's, it does help, but it's, I mean, you know, it's a very slow growing process here as far as how much money, the $3, $3 tax resolution. That's right.
So...
But some of these, I mean, as far, me and Rex, we actually talked about this yesterday because I kind of thought this was coming up. And they are allowed to charge certain fees in that office, like they have a max amount of $25, and they're currently charging 15 for courthouse security. But every penny we collect in that, if we went to the max amount, that all goes to the courthouse security fund. These, the problem with a lot of money we get is restricted, so we can't use it for, I mean, I don't know who can, if, that would be a legal question for Jay, how can the restriction be lifted, or, but I think these are under state law, so...
And one thing we'll clarify is, we only charge what was passed by the county commission. Some of these, there's some of these fees that says you can charge $10 or up to 25. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
We can only put, we can only cost on the cost, place on the cost bill what you all passed by resolution. For example, some of these, the state law says that you can pass a 20, up to a $25 litigation tax, anywhere from a 10 to 25. You all passed a resolution years ago that said, pass 10. So that's all we do, pass along. There are probably, me and Robbie's looked at it, talked to Jay a little bit, there's quite a few litigation tax and things that we can look at. At the end of the day, you got to remember, you got civil charges, and you got criminal charges. Most, most of the civil cases, everybody pays their civil cases. That's, I mean, they, it's, they probably about 100% pay on that. Your criminal stuff, on a good year, we can collect about 30%, 25 to 30%. So...
But not since you've got here, that's going to go to 90%.
Well, I'll be honest, I'll be honest, and I don't care, I brag of myself. The last, you know, when I look at the money I turn over from my clerk fees to the, to the general fund, for the first six months out of the year, we averaged $43,000 a month. The last five months, I ain't got, I ain't got, June's that, we've collected 61. So we're at 40%. And a lot is, we put a collection clerk in place, we're just getting started. And a lot is, we put a collection clerk in place, we're just getting started. And I think that number's going to get a little better. But I can't tell you that's going to be historical because if I go back and look at historical data, it's, it's all over the place. But I can just say for the last five months, it is up, and I'm very proud of that. And we're going to be very aggressive with it. So we've got an opportunity to look at some of those taxes that we can, we can add to the court costs of things. But at the end of the day, I just want to realize, what I've looked at, I think on the best case scenario, about $100,000 of new money that we can probably collect. And that's, that's probably, you know, it could be 75, it could be 125. But I think it's in that neighborhood. Don't think it's a half a million dollars of new money that might come from.
As it stands now.
Yeah. And I think that's, that's if going in and increasing the maximum amounts. You know, going from the $10 to 25 per case.
So this, go ahead, I'm sorry.
But I think we could potentially generate, you know, a little over $100,000. But Robbie said, some of these are designated funds. Some of it, you know, one of those, it goes into courthouse security. Can't use it for anything else. One of the others goes into the debt ones, to 151. It's a debt service fund, offset, you know, any bond and bonded debtiness that's from the jail. So we can't use that in the general fund. But there are a few that we can actually transfer over. They'll go into my clerk fees, which I can turn back over, or we collect for, on behalf of the county.
So the, and I appreciate, and I'm sure the commission appreciates your feedback and certainly looking forward to $100,000 extra. I know you're not budgeting it for this purpose, but it's good to hear that you're searching for that extra funds. So the tax litigation tax, Private Act of 1963, Chapter 206, that Commissioner Isbell talked about, is something different than what you're talking about.
I think that's part of it, Jay.
You're okay there. It's the extra $10 that was passed in 2013. We passed a resolution. It was a three-pronged resolution.
Jay, can you come to the microphones so people could, I apologize, I just want people to hear.
We passed a resolution in 2013. I've got a copy for you. Annette was very gracious in getting us a copy. But it had, it had three parts to it. It had an extra $10 for the jail construction. It had, that added on to that 1963 Private Act that you're talking about. It had a component in it that brought it up another 15 that Rex has identified. And then another for Sheriff's Department Communications and Electronics that, these are on the books. They've been passed by county commission, and Rex has identified those with his staff. And I've gone back, pulled the resolutions with Annette's help. They just need to be collected. This is something you've already passed, and I appreciate you, Rex, for getting on top of that. But going forward, he's also got some other collection efforts. He told you about the collection clerk. That's been very good. And also, we're working on some other avenues to bring in some of these uncollected debt there. But these are, this is going to help. It's a small portion, but it's going to help in the long run. It'll certainly help the Sheriff's Department. It'll help the debt on the new jail construction and a little bit to the general fund. But moving forward, we'll be able to collect these. It's already authorized. And then you can go back if you want to. I'll bring you the amounts if you would like to increase litigation taxes. We can do that if you want to bring them up more.
What's the limit on it?
Well, it depends on which one we're under. There's, there's five or six different statutes. We can bring one up. And also, the jail board, the keep, the jailer's fee, we set it at $50 a day with a max at 500. All those can be amended. We found another one Rex's, Rex's office did for community, community mediation. That's $2. There's a ASAP one has expired now. We need to pass that. That's $5. And all this combined, to Commissioner Isbell's point, could really help us in the long run over several years. But we've identified them. We're going forward, we'll get them on the books, and we'll see how it goes. Now, one of them was passed by county commission that also authorizes the municipal courts to assess this litigation fee. So that's going to be interesting to see, work with Rocky Top, Clinton, and also Oak Ridge in the assessment of those fees. But anyway, the point is valid that Commissioner Isbell's talking about. Robbie's done a good job, and I appreciate Rex for identifying those.
And just to give you an example, for one of them, I think it might be, it's the jail building tax. If we could, we could increase that $15 per case. When civil, we had about 3,000 cases last year. And I can tell you, we collect about 100% of that. So that would generate about $45,000. On the criminal side, we had about 5,000 cases of the $15. We only collect about 30%. It, it generated about $25,000. So by doing that, we could generate another $70,000.
And I don't mean to interrupt, but obviously, the Budget Committee's brought us the budget. And we're here, there's a motion on the floor for us to address that. And I do appreciate all the information. I guess my question is, have, have these issues been discussed at the Budget Committee level?
No, sir.
Okay. So, you know, those are things that I think, to Commissioner Isbell's point, that probably, and again, maybe we just noticed it or found it or whatever. But these kinds of things should be discussed at that level, I believe, before a budget comes to this level. And then we sit here and start rehashing things. And, and I know that's not what people want to hear about the budget going back. But, you know, I, we all hear you say we could potentially get another $100,000 if we don't even raise prices, potentially.
And I, and I'm not here to ask you to raise them. I'm here to tell you that what we're currently doing, and if you all choose to raise them, we can. But I'm, that's not my, I'm not here to ask you to raise any.
No, I, I appreciate the feedback, and I hear you loud and clear. But let's, Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. Firstly, I wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Isbell for doing the research. That's, that's a rude eye awakening for everyone that this was out there. We simply weren't aware of it. With Jay, I'd like to ask, bring all of those tax items to the Budget Committee.
Could you pull the doors to, go ahead, Commissioner Scott?
To ask Jay to bring those litigation items, those taxes, to the Budget Committee and let us know where things stand right now, where they could be, and how that would impact it, the budget. And then with Rex to simply ask, of these taxes that are being collected, or, I'm sorry, of the money that's being collected, as an example, where does the first $100 go? Does it go straight to wherever? So people, so that we have a better understanding of why things are the way they are right now.
Fair enough. Commissioner Creasy?
Yeah. And I may have to address the law director to help me answer this question. But Commissioner Isbell's worked real hard and showed real leadership in trying to get some good answers to help us relieve part of this tax increase if we have to vote for one. And he said, "We may need some time." Hire a finance director, put them to work in trying to figure out a way to do this. And by Tennessee statute, I think we're asked by the Tennessee laws to try to pass a budget by July the 30th, I mean, June the 30th, and, and have that in place by July the 1st. But I know from past practice, we have gone beyond the July 1st date. In fact, I remember one year where we were facing a tax increase during an election year. And it seems to me, if I remember correctly, we didn't pass a budget until the new county commission was sworn in. And, and I want to know, is that still, are we still eligible? Or do we still have that option to put off passing the budget before July the 1st? Do we have that option to delay?
It's not as lenient as it was under the 57 Act. We're under the 81 Act. It's much more stringent as it is now. Back to this litigation tax. We've identified them. They've been passed by county commission.
Commissioner Fritz, will you let him use the microphone for a second? Thank you.
We've identified them. They've been passed by county commission. They've just not been assessed and collected. Okay? Now, the circuit court clerk is going to collect those. I don't think, what we'll see is exactly what Rex spoke to about. We're going to see about $100,000 in new money coming up this year if we have good collection rates. And then that sheriff's electronic one, that'll bring in some extra money. But we're not talking about a lot of money here that's going to assist with the budget process. There's, in the long run, I'll bring this back, and you might want to consider raising some of these. But there's only a couple that we can raise. We're at max limits on them. The issue is, we've just not been assessing it and collecting it. County commission has done what they can do on this issue. They passed, that 2013 resolution you had was, had three prongs in it. So we, we can, we're going to move forward with that. There's nothing that would inhibit you considering the budget tonight and passing the budget tonight. It's, again, it's not a lot of money, but I'm glad the circuit court clerk has identified this. And I'm glad Commissioner Isbell brought it to everyone's attention. Because there is, it's not just the one Commissioner Isbell brought forward. We found three more that was not being collected or assessed and collected from prior court clerks. But it'll help. It'll certainly help in the long run. Is, am I answering your question?
Not exactly.
Okay, help me. I'm sorry.
And that's why I asked the chairman to let me contain you a little bit.
Yes, please.
Andy? Is Robbie's microphone working where he don't have to keep getting up and down? Okay, Robbie, you're allowed to use that.
The, well, the litigation tax was only one item that Commissioner Isbell brought up.
Actually, three in that same resolution.
He brought up a lot of other issues that he's been looking into. And he's, from what he's suggesting, if I heard him correctly, what he's suggesting is that we hire the finance director and have them to do more research to help us find a way to reduce the possible tax increase that we're faced with. And so my, my question was originally, by state law, what is the, what are we just absolutely have to have our budget pass?
What you're looking at now under the 81 Act, you've got to show extraordinary circumstances to delay passing this budget. And I believe we're looking at Ju, you cannot, with the extraordinary circumstances, you can't extend it past September 30th.
I'd like to add to that.
Go ahead, Robbie.
We, me and Natalie talked to the state about this, about the continuing resolution, which we don't have to adopt one now. But the extraordinary, extraordinary circumstance, there's, she told me there's never been one passed. So just because y'all can't agree, I mean, I'm not, but that's not an extraordinary circumstance that they'll allow a budget to go continue past August. And if it goes to August and it's not passed, the state will come in and take over. And how to, and they balance your budget, she said, by making cuts to programs that aren't, that you don't have to have. So that's what.
So it's still the August date?
Yes.
If that's still the law?
That is the law.
That's what I was wanting to get at. And I think that's what Commissioner Isbell was getting to.
Yeah, don't confuse it with the old 57 Act where we could go with the last quarter expenditures into the first quarter of the next fiscal year. You're just allowed two months under the 81 Act. It's a little bit different there, July and August.
I think the two of you answered my question.
Thank you.
Commissioner, just a quick comment. Wouldn't not having a finance director be maybe qualified for that circumstance?
I mean, it's possible, but I will say too, that we had our finance director here for three-fourths of this budget process with Natalie. She's just missed one budget meeting. And I know that, I mean, and I'm not, I'm the interim, and that's fine. But I will say, in 30 years I've worked here, I've not worked for a better budget director or more knowledgeable. And I can't imagine anybody else giving any more expertise than she did on this budget, so.
Good comments.
So.
Appreciate that. All right, let's, Commissioner Isbell, then Commissioner Fritz will be next, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. And this, I know sometimes it's out of order to speak twice for everybody else.
Well, it's a special call meeting, and we're here for the budget, so there's going to be a lot of discussion, and I'm all for it.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, to, to the point that I was trying to make, we've already come up with an extra $100,000 possibly to help fund the jails. Because I understand they need that. I voted for that new pod. And all I'm trying to do is, is these ideas came from somebody else that used to be a budget director and a school budget director and all that. Because, you know, that you look at all these items. And if we can take and we, we can lessen the blow and incorporate any of this new revenue that comes in. Because like I say again, even with the 18.25, we're still going to have to go in debt 3 more million. And when you say 3 million, how much interest is on that? 3.8 million? But thank you.
Good comments. Commissioner Fritz?
One thing I have to say, you know, I agree with our interim director that Natalie was very good, what she did. And she followed the budget through and made outstanding recommendations. And, and she led this budget committee in the right direction. When everybody came through and all the stuff that was fully recommended, it started out going to be over a 50 cent, 52 cent or something like that tax increase. And it got whittled down and whittled down and whittled down and whittled down to where a lot of the departments and stuff in this county are still suffering and hurting, just even with the budget proposal. And here we are, coming up with pipe dreams and this, that, and the other to trying to say, you know, to delay it, do all this, that, and the other to see what we can't do to even prevent the inevitable. We keep putting things off and keep putting things off and keep putting things off. And I'm just sitting back amazed at a lot of the things that people were dreaming up and coming up with. We've got urgent needs now that has to be addressed. The state has put us on notice that we are overcrowded at the jail. If we do not staff and fund the jail, we could end up having one of the largest tax increase in the history of the state of Tennessee to ship our prisoners to state jails outside the state of Tennessee because they will come in at a decertifier jail. They will send a fire marshal in and shut our jail down. Then we will be required to, we'll have to have a major tax increase and probably keep having tax increases to send our prisoners to jails outside the state of Tennessee. And we'll have nothing to show for it. And so do I want to see a tax increase to open up Unit 1? No. But it's protecting the taxpayers and keeping the cost as low as we can to protect them and to do the right thing for the taxpayers of Anderson County. So that's the 6.75%, and that's lower than what they originally wanted. The 3%, the 1% for the landfill? We don't have no say in that. That's got to, the cost operating the landfill is going up, and we have no choice. We have to pay that. If people wants to get rid of their trash, we have to pay that. The other 3 cents is for our employees. Our employees, it's just like everybody that works. Every single person in every single household, regardless where you work, wants to have a raise. And our employees deserve a raise. So that's where 3 cents is going there. Then the schools, they have their capital needs, and they're hurting bad for there. And as you see, even cutting it back like we did, we cannot, we still 3 million that where we can't fund these sheriff cars, the ambulances. They're putting roofs on buildings and things like that. Well, with $3 million, we may have to take out bonds and stuff. We are hurting. And here we are trying to pipe dream things and come, looking to the future and maybe this, that, and the other. $100,000 is going to be great. But again, that's just a, a small tip of what we are needing. I mean, because again, we've gone from 52 cents to more than 52 cents down to 18 cents. We need it now, and we got to address now, and we've got to quit pushing things off. And it's time this commission acts and do what's best for the citizens of this county.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Commissioner McCamey?
I too appreciate the information. I listened to him on the radio yesterday. And there are a lot of good things we think are coming to Anderson County. Everything that he mentioned can help us toward that 3 million that we're going to be short for our capital needs. But we need to approve a budget because school starts in what, another five, six weeks? If, if we put that off another month... If, if we put that off another month, then they don't have time to prepare for the school year. The budget that's being prepared or being presented here today, lets them go back and start tomorrow, getting their people ready, hiring the people that need to be hired, terminating people that they have to terminate, whatever, you know, whatever they have to do, they need to know that. And they need to know it by July 1, when this school year or fiscal year ends, June 30. The Sheriff needs to know so that he can plan, so when the Tennessee Corrections Institute visits us again, which they do on a regular basis, and they monitor our jail population, he needs to know what he's going to be able to do beginning July 1, because anything, any type of construction has to be bid and started. And we need to approve a budget, and then when these good things happen, that money can all go toward our $3 million deficit that has been pointed out.
Thank you, Commissioner McCamey. Commissioner Smallridge.
Yes, I confess after sitting through, I don't know how many sessions with the Budget Committee, I'm still struggling with the information and what's the best approach. I don't think any of us are enamored with the prospect of an 18 cent tax increase. I thought coming into Budget deliberations, I was thinking about something in the range of 10 to 12 cents on the tax rate, knowing we had some tremendous needs, and that wouldn't even cover all of the needs, that would just cover some of the needs. But listening to our department heads, listening to the schools, I came to conclusion what they were asking for was very much needed. At least, at least it was, make us a very good start on meeting some of the needs in the county. The cost of living for our employees, I think that's a no-brainer. We've got other communities giving 2% to 3%, 4% raises, and we're looking at a minimum of 2%. I think that's, that's got to be addressed. As you did, I heard from citizens who, through emails, and then here in our Budget Committee and in our regular Commission meeting that stood up, and what I heard was support for the budget as it is being proposed. So looking at everything, I have come to the conclusion that I have to support where we are with the recommendations from the Budget Committee. I know that's a, maybe a little hard, that's a hard pill to swallow, but I think we need to begin to address some of the needs in this, in the county, better than we have in the past.
Thank you, Commissioner Smallridge. Was the Budget Committee, did they vote on the school proposed budget no later than July, June 1? According to the budget schedule for 2019-2020 fiscal year on the website, andersoncounty.com under the Finance Director's report, this is the guidelines and the procedures for the budget as we're talking about now. It was highlighted that the school budget would be passed according to TCA-1105A, I might be missing a number there, my spectacles don't go down that low. But the Budget Committee shall vote on the school's proposed budget no later than June 1, and the Director shall notify the school. Was that done?
Yes, it was.
Now, we move on, and here we are today. Commission must adopt the budget on before August 31st unless extension is approved by the Comptroller's Office of the State and Local Finance, and that's TCA Code 11H1-2. So that's where we're at. Commissioner Jameson.
I'll be very brief. I like to deal in facts. This tax increase for a family that has a hundred thousand dollar home is about $5. Is that right?
A month.
A month, yeah. That won't buy you a pack of cigarettes. So if you smoke a pack a day, you just smoke 29 packs a month instead of 30, and you've got your taxes paid for. Now, if you don't smoke that much, you still save 5, if you cut out a couple of packs a month, you can save a lot of money, plus it's going to be healthy for you. There's a lot of other things where we can, if we want to do something, we'll come up with the money. Like if I want to go to the UT football game, I need the $200. I'm going to come up with that $200. Now, you have, I've not been on this board but six or seven months, and I was not here this three previous years, they did not raise your taxes a penny, is that correct?
What was the timeframe? I'm sorry, I didn't-
Last three years.
Six years.
Well, anyway, for several years, the taxes have not been raised. That was spoiled you, they spoiled you. And so now we've got a need. We need, and everybody in here, if you think about it, we want the best police departments, Sheriff's Department, jails, we want schools, our most valuable asset is our children. We've got to educate these people. It's harder now to get a job unless you want to work at one of the fast food places. Now, listen, I can get a job, I can get 10 jobs in the next 30 minutes, making eight or 10, $12 an hour. They're begging for people. But if you're going to get a job today, you've got to either have some training, some education, or a wealthy daddy. Those are your choices. And so this amount is not an exorbitant amount of money. It's $5 a month on a hundred thousand dollar house, it's $10 a month on a $200,000 house. If you make $300,000 or $400,000, you ain't sweating the taxes anyway. So I don't want, really want to raise taxes, but I don't, I think we need this, and I don't think this is an exorbitant amount. Now, we have some members on this board, and they're good people, I've known them forever, but they do not vote for any tax increase, which is their right. And we can talk, and we can talk, and we had, we had supposedly the best Budget Director in the state, and she's the one that came up with this, and now we're wanting to put this off a month or two or three months? I say let's vote it up or vote it down, and then we'll go on to greater things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add one more thing? They're going to clap like that. No, and I think one of the things that's going to help us in the future, our trustee, Regina Copeland, has come up with a plan where people can pay so much a month, and then it's not a big hit at the end of the year. That's one of the best ideas we've had since sliced bread. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jameson. Good comments.
An 18.25 tax increase is $46 a year on a hundred thousand dollar home, so it's actually less than, it's $46 a year on a hundred thousand dollar home. So that's, that's not even $5, right?
Any, any other Commissioners have anything to cover on this before I open it up to the floor for people to speak? Can we shut that door again, please?
As mayor, the motion, I reserve the right to speak last.
That is correct. Anyone else want to speak here on the body, Board? All right, we're going to open it up to the floor. Mayor Hader-
I was going to say something else. I was looking for my button.
It's okay. Commissioner Creasy.
Well, thanks to the Oak Ridge, they made, on the front page this week, they put 18 cent tax increase, and they put my picture with it. Now, I've heard from people I haven't heard from since I've been elected 29 years ago, and, and a lot of them, some, well, not a lot, but there was a couple that brought the paper to me, the front page, and showed it to me. But I had a little bit different perspective, because I've heard from people that are hurting financially in my district, some were out of my district, but most of the ones that commented from that article were Oak Ridge in my district. And, and I have, I have to consider that. I have to consider their feelings, just like I have to consider the feelings for the raises for our staff here, which I'm very much in favor of. I'm in favor of the solid wage increase, we desperately need that. But I'd like to ask the question of this, there was someone on the Budget Committee that gave you this, Commissioner, right? 3 cents for the sheriff, 3 cents for the schools, 2 cents for a total of 6. That's a lot less than 18 cents.
8 cents on this sheet.
But can the sheriff get by with 3 cents? Can the schools get by with 3 cents? They're shaking their head no. I didn't see what the sheriff said, but I don't want to put the sheriff on the spot, but the employee raises, I'm definitely in favor of that. What can we, can we reduce the 18? Is that possible? Because I owe it to those constituents that contacted me this week, can we lower this any from 18 cents? I really need to know that. And if anybody has any suggestion that we can do that, I know Tim's been working real hard on it, I'm sure other Commissioners have too. I was very much in favor of, of the 18 cents. I thought the Budget Committee did an excellent job. I'm still in favor of their recommendation, but I still owe it to my constituents to do what I can. I think Commissioner Smallridge made excellent remarks. I feel much the same way he does. I attended most of the Budget Meetings, I did miss one or two. I was on the Budget Committee prior to this year's budget, and I saw what we went through there, and I saw a tax increase coming two years ago. And, and those on the Budget Committee when I was may remember, I kept bringing that up. We've got to watch where we're going, because it looks like we're going to have a tax increase this year. If there's any way we can adjust that and still get the same things done, I'd like to, like to work towards that end. If there's no way to do it, I'll vote for the tax increase.
Thank you, Commissioner, Dr. Perick, sir. Sorry, Mayor, I'll get to you eventually.
Mr. Creasy, your question was, you know, one of the things that we did when I took over four years ago, if you remember, we were, every year the school was using between 1.2 and 1.8 million to balance the budget. The first year we come in, that Budget Committee said, "We don't want to do that anymore. We don't want you to be using one-time money for recurrent budget." We've balanced our budget the last three years. Before we started this year, we cut, we cut $700,000 out of our budget, that was 13 positions. We came back when we had our budget with not asking for the 8 cents. We started out asking for 8 cents, because 8 cents would take care of our capital needs. We did a program for, looks out for 10 years. We've actually came back, the 821,000 that we were out, we've cut that out of our budget too. So we've cut a total of 1.4 million out of our budget. The capital programs will do two things. They allow us to give our teachers and our burn employees a 2% raise, but it also sets that a money aside, that it can never be used for anything but capital funds. That way, in 10 years, if I'm sitting here, which I hope I'm not, but if I am, and you're still here, we'll, we'll have this conversation, and I'll say, as of today, we've paid the debt of our schools in half, and our roofs are in great shape, our schools are in great shape, and our kids. Three things that the Budget, when I took over, they asked me to do three things. They asked me to better communicate with this board and the community, they asked me to raise the rigor of our students, and they asked me to fix our capital outlay programs. And we've done all three of them. And the last thing we need is, is that 6 cents will take care of that. It will take care of those programs, that it can't be eaten up in the budget, because as you know, things get eaten up in a budget, and that's why we want it in a separate account, that it can never be put into a regular budget. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Perick.
Thank you.
I'm going to go Commissioner Scott, but after Commissioner Scott, Mayor's going to have the floor. Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. The last time the Budget Committee met, at that time, the Sheriff had asked for 3 cents. Yeah, you brought it down, well, when we had the meeting, you brought it down.
4.7.
Okay, I apologize, 4.71. It's now at 6.75 is what-
Good question. When we, and we had sent out the email to the whole body, it's not meant to have it. It is a, it was our way of just digging deep and trying to, to work as a team, not just with the Sheriff's Department, but the county as a whole. And then what she's referring to is opening up half of Unit 1, which that would equate to 4.71 cents on the tax levy, which was presented to the Budget Committee, that was voted down, and the Budget Committee supported the opening, full opening of Unit 1. Myself and the Sheriff have stated, we still stand behind the original budget that we submitted to the Commission, and that's opening all of Unit 1. But we will, if, if the Body would like to go with half of Unit 1, we will do everything we can to make it work. And that was, I believe, what she was referring to, and that would bring it down to the 4.71 cents that was not approved by the Budget Committee.
And my reason for bringing that up is, in this budget that's been proposed, EMA would receive 100% of the fire truck money. During our Budget Meetings that we had, it was pointed out that it's not a fire truck. This year would be the rescue squad receiving funds. Being that the rescue squad doesn't need a fire truck, a truck, it was suggested that they get half of the money this year and push the other half of the money to next year. The senior center, Cherie stepped forward at the beginning of the Budget Process and asked for $25,000. Going off the top of my head, it was $14,800, I believe, to go towards funding a part-time employee, with the rest of those funds to go towards Cherie to receive a pay raise. We still have 205 Main to deal with. So that's a little under my skin. At the last meeting, Cherie stepped forward and asked for the $25,000 for a part-time employee, and I pointed out that you just received a $20,000 pay raise when 205 Main was, was brought to light. At that time, there was supposed to be fundraisers, et cetera, where the funding would go back to support that pay raise. And she said, yes, but I'm still one person. And I voted no, but most of the people on the Budget Committee suggested that she have the $25,000 for the part-time employee. With it, with saying that, I think it's necessary for the Budget Committee to go back and review without going through a rushed process and looking at where things lie realistically. The EMS department has about $400,000. Because they have been short-staffed through the year, they've not had the people to run the ambulances. On the west end of Oak Ridge, there is a, there is an EMS station that has either held an ambulance in the garage with the door closed and no employee vehicles outside of it, or there's been employee vehicles outside of it and no ambulance. The reason why I say that is to say that there are no staff in the station to support the west end of Oak Ridge. They're out there, they're not necessarily in that station. They're not necessarily in that station. Nathan had come to us at the last meeting and said, I'm not going to need four ambulances. So that was taken into consideration with regards to the capital outlay project. He's got $400,000. He's got a budget for next year. I think the $400,000 needs to go back to the general fund. That's more pennies off the tax increase. But then again, like I said, I think it all needs to go back to the Budget Committee. I'm just bringing out points that, that are out there, reasons why it really needs to be looked over. Instead of rushing through and saying, okay, let's make it 20 cents, yea, nay, let it go to full commission. We've got time to work it out. It may not be six months, but it doesn't have to be tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Who, who made them?
Is that a motion?
There's a motion on the floor right now. Did you have something you want to say, Sheriff, or?
Yes, please. In reference, again, just to Unit One. Currently, as it stands today, TCI tells us that we're overcrowded at 370 inmates.
When they tell you that, is that over the phone or in writing?
It's in writing, and it's in assessments and.
Okay, because normally, when I've sat on Commission, there'd be a letter that'd come into Commission that says, and they would show up, and they'd stand in front of us and say, we're shutting you down in 60 days. Now, I'm not doubting you, okay?
Well, yeah.
But, you know, I, I think it's a, I think the real issue is, when that happens, you both will be standing before us with the document in your hand, saying, we're shutting down in 30 days, you better take action. And that's when we passed a tax increase last time to put the jail in place. Why it hasn't ever been used is beyond me, but that's not discussion today. So, you know, I get a little concerned when I keep hearing that we're going to be shut down tomorrow because that's not reality.
Yeah, Commissioner, what I don't recall ever saying that.
I didn't say, you said that. But the image seems to be that we better do it, or something bad's going to happen tomorrow. I, I just want you to say, as the sheriff, how much time would that take? When would it go into effect? So, I'm not advocating we don't fund you, or fund the schools, or fund the EMS. I just want to be open with the taxpayers of this county. So, you know, in this, I think this is my 18th budget. Some of us have had a lot more time on budgets. But, you know, I sat and listened, I walked out of one, okay? So what's going to happen is what's going to happen. And we can sit here and debate it all day. I've not spoke against anyone's budget. Everyone here knows. Commissioner Jamison's already pointed out, didn't say my name, and I appreciate that. I'll say my own name. But, well, let's just move on down the road here. Let's not try to play the shell game with each other, and let's be honest and open. We have a motion on the floor. It's this simple. We either vote it up or vote it down, make the next motion, let's get down the road. But we, we seem to find ourselves discussing pockets, in my opinion, things that should have been discussed at the budget level. And I'm sorry that maybe they were, maybe they weren't, maybe they were, but here we are, rehashing some of the same conversations. So, some of the commissioners haven't even got to spoke yet. I'd like for them, Commissioner Denner.
I absolutely, I absolutely agree with you. And we came up here in response to what Commissioner Scott said.
Yes, sir.
But I would love to see us vote on this right now. I agree. We have to be on the same page.
And, and the one thing I'll say too, Sheriff, is you've always been very upfront. One, I like what you're doing in your team, your staff. You're, you're a shining star, as far as I'm concerned, in this county for the Sheriff's Department. And, and I'm proud of you and your whole department, as well as the EMS, even though I've been outspoken at times. But here, the, the issue is, you've always said from day one, you'll accept what we, we give you. And, and I don't think you say that to pacify us. I think that's the truth.
No, I mean that. Let's vote.
Yeah, so.
Hey, let's, let's, whoever meets the road, I mean.
Nah, we're, we're gonna get there eventually, you know. There's no ballgames or anything tonight, and don't have a flight in the morning, so we can sit here as long as it takes. I'm proud of myself and this committee on taking fast, not fast, but really proficient Commission meetings, and we all have done a great job, as far as I'm concerned. It's not just me, it's all of us together collectively. So, I want to continue that, but this is a hard thing to do. So, Commissioner Dennerberg, I'm gonna let the mayor come up, and then you'll be next. Did you still want to speak, or did you?
Yes, I think I did.
Okay. Will you be okay? Okay. Mayor, come on up. I'll go to you, Commissioner Dennerberg, and I'll come back to you, Commissioner Isabel, and anybody else on committee. Sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
Yes. I just wanted to throw in my two cents as part of this process, and as someone who has proposed budgets in the past. And I think this tax increase is a bad business decision for Anderson County. We have made a lot of progress, and that has been by you as the Commission. A mayor in the past, under the 57, only proposed a budget, and I did have to make some of the, the tough decisions. I served with several of you on bu- budget committees where we made those tough decisions to forward to full commission. But ultimately, it was, it was your business decision. I know there are people that can afford this tax increase. I would willingly pay, and I, I do make many charitable donations to organizations in this community to build up our community. But there is an issue in our community with the property tax rate. There has been. With Commission, you all have done a really good job of trying to bring stability to that rate, while other counties have been raising theirs, making us more competitive. But if you look at us across the state, we do have an issue with fair market housing. And that's one of the problems. If you sit on any of these task forces, if you look at children and youth, the issues that are there, if you look at the work of our homeless organizations, that's, that's a problem. And it might not affect a Terry Frank, but when a developer or someone who is in the rental business is trying to rent an apartment, and then also absorb those rates, it does get passed along to those least able to afford it. I, I am, and I have talked with Dr. Parrott. Natalie and I traveled to McMinn County. There is value in funding capital needs. And funding capital needs does lend itself to operational relief for, for those departments. I, I think if you look over time at the school department and even the county, you know, I'm all for people making money, but we're making a lot of bankers and, and people in the interest business wealthy. So there, there is value in what we're trying to do there. I don't want to come across as being opposed to the sheriff. Lord knows I was sued by the sheriff before. When the new jail was built, they wanted 36 employees. I did. I pulled the numbers here tonight as part of my budget. In 2013, the jail revenue wa- or the jail budget line was $4,990,893. As part of my budget proposal, in my very first budget, understanding those needs for new jailers, I put in an additional $787,000 for salaries for new jail positions. That, put that at, in 2014's budget, at $5,777,937. Now we're looking at $7,347,000 for the jail. And I'll point that out, this sheriff doesn't own that, he's new. But I point that out to say, before we go back to the taxpayers, this is why I get very passionate about going to the state for increased reimbursements, doing more on the opiate issue. Before we go back to the taxpayer, tha- that's the easy thing to do, but it's not that easy for them to pay. And then it also has repercussions. And we acknowledge those repercussions every time we come with a TIF plan, or a payment in lieu of, or a tax abatement. Because what we're doing is, we are admitting that the cost of doing business and the numbers and the spreadsheets won't work unless we give you an abatement, or a TIF, or a deal to help you pay. But the average person might not get that same benefit. So, I know you have, I'm not here, I'm not scolding you, I, I don't envy you, you have to make the tough decision. But I just think what you're looking at is going to set us back. And we have come a very long way. We almost had $1 million in growth last year. We did some things last year. We funded pay raises last year with anticipate, with one-time money, one-time money. And this year, it came due. So when we had almost $1 million in growth, part of that's already eaten up with a decision that we made last year. So, I know that I have had cuts in my department, I know Commission has cut that. I've willfully cut some of those. Sometimes it's painful to do, but I think we can do it. But what we're looking at with the 18 cents, I, I just, I think it's going to set us back. So that's my two cents.
Mayor, on the.
Yes, sir.
Million, and I appreciate your comments. The $1 million in growth, what's that, i- is that saying that the revenue increased by a million?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions for the mayor? Yes, sir. Commissioner Waddell.
Mayor, you're, you have one department that is asking for a penny for the, for a tax increase, solid waste. Are you in favor of that?
You know, he, if I were proposing the budget, and what I did in the past, I always brought this Commission a no-tax-increase budget. If I needed to find it in another department, or, you know, we could analyze the revenues or find it somewhere, somewhere else. It's not that I'm for a tax increase for solid waste. I have talked to Mr. Tobalca, he is here tonight, he can answer any questions. We can do it with less, so.
I mean, it's your department.
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's your department, you manage it. So I, I mean, I just want to hear from you. If, if you say that you have to have that penny, I believe you. But if you say you can do without it, then I also believe that and think that that should be one of the first things we cut. So I just want to get your.
Well, and we. We did say that at Budget Committee, and the Committee, it was kind of like the sheriff came in willing to do with less. We came in willing to do with less, but the Budget Committee recommended the penny. Eventually, eventually, there are increases that are built into the waste disposal. And as commissioners in a couple of districts know, we already have a couple of convenience centers. There's a lot of growth and activity going on. Those convenience centers have filled up in a day, and there's more trash being disposed. Those aren't things that we can control through efficiencies, or, those are bills that come due that you're going to have to pay no matter what. Does it need to be built into the budget? No, you can deal with that a- as it comes. But within two years, it needs to be dealt with. I believe Jeff needs some help, and if you want me to find it somewhere else, if, if you want to take it off the tax increase, I'll be happy to sharpen the pencil and make a recommendation. That wasn't my recommendation to fund it that way.
Okay, so you, you, you're not in favor of the penny?
I'm in favor of getting more funds for solid.
But not for a tax increase?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. That's what I want to know. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Dennerberg, and welcome to you, Commissioner Isabel. Thank you, Commissioner Denner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mayor. I had quite a bit more that I was going to say, but most of it's been covered by other commissioners, the mayor, and some others that have spoken. So, all I want to say is thank you to those of us who were on the Budget Committee that have gone through this process, because it has been very grueling. We have taken everything that has been said by the different departments, and the heads of those departments, as to what their needs are. And I think we have agonized over what to do to help provide what their needs are. And I mean that as far as the Sheriff's Department, the schools, and EMS. With that, I want to also thank Commissioner Isabel for all of his work. I think he has done an excellent job and pointed out some things that, especially some of us who are relatively new on Commission, have had no clue about. So with that, I will say thank you, and pass it on to Commissioner Isabel, and I'm ready for a vote.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennerberg. Well said. Commissioner Isabel.
Thank you, Chairman Dennerberg, and everyone for the, for the nice comments. Something else that we don't consider when we're sitting up here, who is our largest contributor or investor to Anderson County? Our industrial plants. Okay? All the ones here in Clinton, all of them, it's in Anderson County. Even the businesses that's in Oak Ridge. Right here is a thing that I got from property assessor. Our total real property in Anderson County is $1,484,793,184,730. And when you break down the classifications, our local utilities is assessed at 55%. Our industrial and commercial is at 40%, okay? So what we're going to do is the 18%, 18 cents, where on residential is 25%, it's going to be a great deal more. But that's also on their real property and their personal property, which means if they got $100 million in assets in that, that's going to increase too. Now, I go in, I work in the local plants. Everybody on this panel knows that's, that's my livelihood. And when I go in and see these people, you know, one, the biggest problem from management is being able to find people. They've dropped their thing from, you know, having to have a GED or a high school diploma to being able to read and write, because it's so hard to get people there. Well, why is that? We don't have the residents, number one. Number two, the other employees is talking about they hadn't had a raise, you know, they hadn't had a raise, they're topped out. But when you go back in and we assess our biggest contributors to the success of this county, another 18 cents on 100 million or, or 200 million, what's that going to do to all those employees? Right now, when they're trying to get money, and they're trying to get a raise, and, and that's, and like I say, I'm not saying that the sheriff and the jail, you know, believe me, I do everything I can for the school system. Both, all three. And the same way with the Sheriff's Department. All I'm saying is, you know, we need to look at things to lessen this, because what effect is that going to have on the people that really contribute the most to this county? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Isabel. Any other discussion around this board? Because I'm going to open it up to the audience now to come approach the Commission. Anyone like to come to the podium? If you do, state your name, your address.
I'm the mayor of Oliver Springs. I make $50 a month. My question is, it's been asked to me, how many of you gentlemen would be able to, willing to take a cut in your pay or retirement? Okay? Several. How much money would that make? I don't know.
Not much.
I know it takes a lot of money to run a city, or it takes a lot of money, more money than run a county, and I appreciate what you guys do. But 12 years ago, if you'd raised taxes 2 cents a year, nobody would probably said a word, you'd had 18 cents. But we always wait and do it in a big bundle. And we'll hit another bundle in six, seven years, because everybody up here knows if they raise taxes, a lot of people ain't going to vote for them. Okay? I tried to run a city without raising taxes, but yet we're getting 18 cents here, forces my people can't afford to pay no more taxes. And I, I run a city that's low-income people, most of them. We don't have that many millionaires in Oliver Springs. We have a few, but they won't admit it. Okay? Tax purposes only, I think. But anyway, I'm not one of them. I spent 30 years in the military, 17 and a half years in the post office, and I thrive every day to do more for my country, my city, and my, and my county.
Mayor, could, could you just state your name for so the people?
My name is Omar Cox, mayor of Oliver Springs, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And I got cards for all of you if you want them. But anyway, I brought them up to go around. You all too. But anyway, you've got to look ahead further than what we do here. I've been watching this Commission, I've been sitting here several times, and we always put off tax rate. Well, we're not going to have a tax increase this year. That's great. Vote for me, I didn't have a tax increase this year. But now look at us, we're having an 18 cent tax increase. We're not having one in our town, we, we'll suffer for it. But I, I don't think we could send another penny in our, our majority of the population, 3,300, whatever it is. But we need to plan ahead, let's use this as a future thing, and look ahead. If you need to raise it 18 now, we have to, we will. I know you will. But we have to answer the people, you know, that's who we represent. All you guys represent, your districts, and Oak Ridge has got a good district, with I think three, three gentlemen in it. They've got a lot more money in Oak Ridge than most, most of those cities have. They've got a lot more money in Oak Ridge than most of those cities have. Got more than Clinton. And Jay didn't mention Oliver Springs a while ago. That's why I didn't mention my name. I didn't think we were supposed to be in this thing. But he did mention Rocky Top and Clinton. Thank you, Jay. But I think we've been overlooked in some areas. We've got a four-wheeler, largest four-wheeler population probably there is as far as on some weekends. And you have a nice one up in this direction too. But they only bring in so much. They don't stop there, spend that much money. We're going to open it up where they can come to town if we can and get everybody downtown. But we have nothing to bring them down there right now. And one reason is money. Money, money, money. If we raise taxes 2 cents, we'll probably have a full house at the next council meeting. I'm surprised there's not more people here than it's here on 18. I see it in the paper and it scared me a little bit. And Rome County is going to go 17, 18, 20, somewhere in there. But they're going to build about three new schools, 60-some million dollars. So one new school and remodel two. But I just ask that, I appreciate all you do. And I know it's a sacrifice for your families, et cetera. I spend a lot of time away from home. My family's grown, but my wife and I are not getting any younger either. I turned 80 in March and I strive to stay young. Got new knees, new shoulders, and I'm doing pretty good. But I just want to thank you for what you do and ask you to please, please look ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate comments. Commissioner Isabel.
Omar, Mr. Cox. I got a comment for you. You don't mind, please.
I'm sorry. I'll go back to mine.
And believe me, I'll watch you every month.
Go ahead.
I follow Oliver Springs, you know, a lot and listen to you all, what you're doing.
Thank you.
And I can understand your strife because I hear it every month because I listen to you all the same way with Rocky Top. And I've even got the property assessments and everything here for Oliver Springs, how much the tax increase is going to, if you want to see it. That's how much it's going to affect Oliver Springs. Got it for Norris. I've got it for Clinton. I've got it for everybody here, how much it's actually going to affect.
Yeah, I would at least like to have a copy of what you're doing today, but I didn't get a copy of that either.
And there is, there's a big difference between Oliver Springs and Oak Ridge, for instance, and Norris. But we appreciate everything that you do as a leader.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? State your name, your address, sir.
My name is Eugene Chaney. I live 760 Bryan Fork Road, which is out there towards Big Bridge State Park. And I talked to you last weekend here. I made a couple of suggestions. And I was told after I made the suggestion that the police force, I mean, the sheriff's department write speeding tickets and slow down some of the speeding out here. I was told by one of the patrolmen that to state that the sheriff's department does not get any money off speeding tickets, which I think there should be some change through the state level. And again, too, on the overcrowdness of the jail, I might take a comment from what they're doing out in Los Angeles, California. They said to put out tent cities for them, but I'm not in tent cities. And I tell you this, there's a lot of veterans out there that's in tent cities. And so, I mean, it may be deserved or anything, but I'm sure there's some way, somehow, I know that. I know I'm retarded. I get a little bit of a deal. I think my wife allows me 25 cents a day for a cup of coffee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Shirley Wells. I live on 314 Jones Lane in Claxton. I am a homeowner and not a renter. December, I became a widow. Before that, I was on a fixed income. And I'm really on a fixed income now because my income has almost sliced in half. I'm managing by cutting my budget. I'm doing without in order to stay in my home. And if I can do it, I know everybody else can do it.
Sorry for your loss and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. And I'm handicapped.
Yes, ma'am. I see that. Thank you. God bless you. Anybody else like to speak to the commission about the proposed we have on the floor, which is 18.25 cents tax increase? Yes, sir. State your name and address, please.
My name is Chris Silver, 645 Batley Road. I just wanted to approach this for a second. I've heard a lot of commissioners talking that maybe some of the things were looked over or need to be looked at more. I think Ms. Scott mentioned that. Commissioner Isabel mentioned where there's a resolution that passed in 2013 for possible income that we've not been collecting. But yet we're coming to the citizens that are paying property taxes. There are different departments that mentioned they might not need exactly what they need in their budget. And then I hear people mention that it's a pipe dream to look at maybe trying to fix the budgets or look for money elsewhere, which is an insult to the citizens. I hear other people mention, well, don't smoke cigarettes and make a big joke at taxpayers' money. It is not a joke. It is taxpayer money. And it looks to me as though it's, we need some organization. This budget needs to go back. You guys need to really look and focus and figure out where the important things are that matter. And one of the most important things that matters is the citizens of this county and how it will affect them directly. So I appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am. State your name and address, please.
April Perry, 90 Dairy Pond Road, Norris. I'd just like to thank the commission for all their hard work. Like a bunch of other people in this room have been through this entire process, or most of it, anyway. And I feel like the Budget Committee's done a really good job with cutting the budget down to 18 cents. At first, I was appalled that the sheriff came in asking for money and that the school wasn't going to get any money. And we worked that out. The sheriff came in, had a conversation with him. And I respect everything that he's trying to do along with all the other people in the county. I keep hearing about revenue and we're going to have revenue from this or that. I feel like the school and the kids that we teach, there's no more important revenue than that for this county. That's the number one revenue that we have is education. I think that, I've known Dr. Parrott for over 15 years. I think he's one of the most fiscally-minded people that I probably have ever met. And I don't mean cheap. I just mean fiscally-minded. And I know, I've seen him cut the budget. Said in, on a couple of meetings with him, watched him cut the budget, watched the board, you know, them cutting the budget and then trying to include that 2% raise for employees. I feel like the Budget Committee has done a great job with this. And I feel like not voting for this is a slap in the face to all the people who have worked hard on these budgets. So I would encourage you to vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, April. Anybody else? Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay. Well, we've been at it almost, what do we got? Hour 45 minutes? Well, I think it's a good time for us to take a vote. If everybody... What's that? I haven't forgot Mr. Mead. I'm going to come back to Mr. Mead. Anybody else? Mr. Mead? Oh, you got snubbed there by the Commissioner Creasy. Commissioner Creasy, you got the floor, sir. You got the last word.
This is the third or fourth time I've spoken. I don't want to stop the conversation. I don't think we're finished yet. And Commissioner Scott made a good point. And I'd like to ask the chairman of the Budget Committee, do you think that if we did go back for one more session of the Budget Committee, we could reduce it and still accomplish what we need for the, our schools, sheriff, and the mayor's budget, solid waste?
Well, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Yeah, please, yeah. I'd like to hear your comment.
We'll do whatever this committee wants done. I would like to see us pass this budget today, if it's all possible. You've all got my notice, my note today. I'm not in favor of the 18.3 cents. I think we could do it a lot less than what we're talking about. But if this committee, if this commission wants it to come back to our Budget Committee, I'll assure you, we'll put every effort in it that we can. We've got, you can look around and we've got Mr. Fritz and Ms. Denberg and Mr. Chaney over here. And we've got Denver. And we've got Mr. Smallridge here. We've got Ms. Scott. We've got Mr. Meredith, myself. We've got good people on this Budget Committee. We have, I think, worked hard. We've listened to everybody. We've, I've never been in anything no worse, I believe. I've slept with this. I've ate with this. You know, we came before operations with it. We came before commission with it. We've tried to get everybody's input. And we've talked to a lot of, I have no respect for nobody no more, I don't think, than Dr. Parrott and Jim over here. The schools, I've always supported the schools. And look at what Sheriff Russell's, you know, he's got a plan to make smaller zones. I mean, there's some good ideas. And the fact that Ms. Regina, just this week or so, I think last Friday on WYSH, she was talking about the plan for making payments on your property taxes. What a, what a great idea. I mean, why didn't I think of that? And then when Tim was on the radio talking the other day about the future, what potential that we're going to collect one of these days? I think the future is Anderson County's. And then listening to the mayor and how she talks about what a, we've got a good thing going. We're going in the right direction. And then what, 18 cents will do to our... I think it's going to put a sort of a stop sign on our growth here in the county. And then there's just a lot of positive stuffs going on. I'm all for the schools. I'm all for the sheriffs. The employees raises, I'm for all that. I think we could do that for 8 cents. You know, we've heard the, we've heard the mayor talk about Jeff Travoca wanting two part-time people or two employees. We started out giving them a penny and then we took it down to half a cent. And now we're hearing that possibly, possibly, we could find it other sources. So if it wants to come back to budget, we'll take it and we'll work with it and we'll run with it. But before we send it back to budget, let's consider the 8 cents. But that's my thoughts. And Mayor Cox, you know, he represents Oliver Springs. And I represent part of Oliver, the Anderson County part of Oliver Springs. And I eat lunch down, everything I can buy, I buy it in Oliver Springs just because those people down there, we're trying to make a living too. I mean, if you've not been to Ruby's Diner, you're missing a good breakfast or a good dinner. There's all kinds of good, Mama's Diner down there. Come on down. I'll buy you dinner sometime. It's a good place.
What day is that?
It's a good place. But, you know, we're, everybody, and what Terry Frank's, I mean, Mayor Frank said a minute ago, a property tax won't, it won't hurt her. I mean, a few dollars won't hurt people like Ms. Frank. And I'm not picking at her. I'm just saying that most of us are on an income level where that we can pay a decent property tax. But there's a lot of folks, like the little lady here from Claxton that just became a widow. Me and my wife, we're raising our grandson. And how many grandparents out here? And I don't make a good living. I make a, I pay bills, but I don't make a good living. But when you bring a grandkid into your home, it adds, it adds money to your, to your budget process. So anyway, if this committee, if this commission wants to come back for the budget, bring it on. I think we're, I started, we're all men enough to handle it, but we're, we'll all handle it, okay? But vote your conscience and do whatever you want to do. And if it comes back to budget, I'll guarantee you, we'll call one as quick as we can and we'll work it out and bring it back to you as best we can.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Commissioner Creasy, did you have some other?
Well, I want to thank Commissioner White and Budget Chairman. Excellent remarks. And you did an excellent job, Jerry. Good public speaking and concern for the citizens and concern for the schools and the mayor's department and the others. I think you made, I'm going to leave it up to Teresa if she wants to amend the motion or to go for another workshop with the Budget Committee. I'll leave that up to her because she brought it up. And I'm sort of in favor of it if we can. And I owe it to my constituents that called me that I mentioned earlier.
Mr. Creasy, I appreciate your bragging on the Budget Committee because we have worked hard.
Oh, I know.
But I appreciate, I've got a lot of respect for you and your longevity on this commission. And I appreciate what you stand for. And thank you for those comments.
Thank you, Jerry, for yours. That's all I have.
Wow, that's a good exchange here. I like it. And I feel the same way for all the Budget Committee members. It ain't easy. Chuck's been on there a day or two. Right, Chuck? Okay, it looks like you've been moving back down because you get the last talk.
Yeah, I waited so they can talk first. Because I reserve the last.
That's right. Who in here? Raise your hands if you don't know. Commissioner Mead's got the last right. Okay. We're all on the same page then. Commissioner Vow, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since I've been on this board, I've always tried to adhere to an unwritten rule that I try to do most of my talking in committee. However, this is a very important issue. So I've actually got some notes that I want to go over. We definitely want to give Commissioner Mead time enough to speak. So cut me off when it's appropriate. Just so everybody's on the same page, this budget that Budget Committee sent to you guys as full commission wasn't the first budget we sent to you. Y'all didn't like the first idea as a full commission. And I agreed at that point. I think Robert was the one that made the comment that let's send it back to Budget Committee and let Budget Committee do their job. I would like everybody on full commission to believe the fact, I would like everybody on full commission to believe the fact, Budget Committee did their job. Now, the question's been asked here tonight, well, what about cutting more out of the budget? I think Jerry asked the question. My answer was no to that until, I think Denver asked a question to the mayor. The only thing I've heard different here tonight that I have not heard before is the idea that we can cut a penny out. That's the only thing different that I've heard so far. I don't know how much, that's one, that's one penny. Now granted, that's a penny, that's a lot, to me anyway, when it comes to the total cost of it, but that's the only thing different that I've heard here tonight. We passed the school department's budget without capital outlay in it, then they come back and they ask for their capital outlay. That's what increased this six cents. Is that number right, Jim? That's what jumped this, is because the Budget Committee felt the need to increase the school department's budget for their capital outlay projects. When anybody stands at that podium and tells us they need something, if I have no cause to doubt them, I take them at their word. I know for a fact, because I live it every day, what the sheriff's office needs, what the jail division especially needs. TCI has completed their inspection for 2019. We passed, and that goes to the efforts of Sheriff Barker and Chief Parker and all the jail staff that work with us. But what I want everybody to understand is, all it takes is a phone call to the Tennessee Corrections Institute in Nashville, Tennessee, to file a complaint, and they can come right back, okay? So just so everybody understands that, we've not come up here and asked for anything that is not needed. The resolution that Commissioner Isabel mentioned, that perked my ears up, I was very interested in that, but then I hear Rex and Jay say, yeah, some of that hasn't been collected, definitely going to work on that and improve that, but I don't know how much closer that gets us to where we need to be right now. If you all want to send this back to budget, I don't know how much more budget is going to be able to do. The three cents, three cents, three cents plan that Jerry talked about was what our chairman had one day at a meeting, and we kind of used it as an agenda. Those numbers didn't pass, that was just what we used as a starting point in that meeting. If this goes back to budget, I'm almost willing to make a motion that everybody flip operations, goes to budget, and budget members go to operations, to let somebody else have a crack at it. You want to second that motion, Denver? But please understand, Budget Committee has done their job. We presented to you a low-cost budget as best as we could. It did start high, I think somebody mentioned a while ago, it started 40 or 50. Rick Meredith led a very good charge on budget to start cutting it. We started cutting it here, we started cutting there, and that's where we wind up with 18. You want to send it back to budget, we'll go around the mulberry bush one more time, but I don't think we're going to bring you back anything much better. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Vowles. Good, good comment, sir. Commissioner Jamison.
I have a question. Can this, what we're getting ready to vote on, can that be amended by us before we vote?
It could. No? Sorry. Sorry, I'm incorrect. We got either voted up or down. That's according to, is that right, Mr.?
Did I have one brief comment? Every member on this board, they don't just represent the people with low incomes, we represent everybody. You know, we've heard a lot, heard a lot of testimonies for people that have limited incomes, that's true. It's in the Bible, the poor will always be with you. And we have a lot of programs that benefit these people. And I don't think this is a punishment of $5 a month or $10 a month on a property tax. Now, what we've been doing here in the last hour is politicking. We're posturing, and so I think we need to vote. This committee, and this is the last thing I say, I promise, this Budget Committee has been working with this, and the commission's been working with this since February or January. So if you think we're going to pull a rabbit, rabbit out of the hat here today, I'd like to see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jamison. Okay, did you guys get clarification on that? That's what, I mean, I wasn't sure, I'll always defer, because I'm just sitting in this seat. So we can make, Commissioner Fritz, sorry. Okay, so we can amend the motion if this, someone wants to, but right now, the motion is to pass the 18.25 cent tax increase as presented by the Budget Committee. Is there any other discussion? If not, let's go vote. Commissioner Mead, sorry, I forgot.
There you go. This is the same person that said, everybody knows.
But you, you didn't pay attention, because I raised my hand when I asked everybody, I didn't know.
I'm not everybody.
Oh, I know.
I'm the person that has the legal right to speak.
I, I'm not certain that I said you didn't have a legal right, but the sheriff's here and the law director, and if they'd like to take me into custody, I'll be happy to go at this very moment. You have the floor, Mr. Mead.
I want you to know that I absolutely excuse your minor brief issue.
Thank you, sir. Coming from an upper, upper statesman in the Navy, I appreciate that.
Yeah, there we go. First, I'd like to say that I agree with Commissioner White and with Commissioner Vowles, that the Budget Committee has done a wonderful job, and they've looked at everything they could possibly look at. They brought in everybody that possibly could have a question. They brought in all the departments, they talked to everybody in detail, and they finally came up with something they thought would work best for the people of Anderson County. And they voted for that in a majority vote, and that majority vote has brought this budget. Okay? Based on that, I feel it would be irresponsible to put off passing this budget tonight. There were no specific valid fixes even suggested tonight. Now, there was one thing about a penny out of solid waste, and then the mayor went on to explain that though required services have grown significantly, and we could deal with this additional cost later, instead of fixing it with the, with the tax that we already have had recommended. I also want to point out, they keep talking about the 18-cent tax, that only apply, that doesn't apply to a third of the county, that doesn't apply to anybody in the city of Oak Ridge, it's only eight cents. And it's eight cents on the tax rate, that's about 2.1%. EMS, which one of the, has been one of the targets for some of these cuts, has been underfunded for over six years, and this commission spent $40,000 for an outside group to come in and explain that to us. And now we're finally trying to go up to the levels of funding that that $40,000 committee we hired recommended. This budget does not fund critical capital projects for the courts, the schools, and other areas that were outlined by the finance director. This, this is not a wild-go-for-it kind of budget. And this whole idea of deal with it when it comes, mean, that means when we finally figure out we've got to spend anyhow, we borrow the money, and I don't believe going into a budget, even then borrowing money is a good idea. Possible new revenue from new court fees and other things are only going to possibly increase about $100,000 in court fees, is a wild guess, and, and maybe another $400,000 or $500,000 in new taxes and stuff that come in. We don't know, those are all guesses, and I hate to go with a guess. If the state takes over our budget in August, what I have been told is that what they do is they come in and anything that is not required under state law, they eliminate. Let me tell you some of the things that could be eliminated. How about the veteran's service office? It's not required. How about the, how about the ambulance service? It is not required under state law. There are a lot of things that are not required under state law, and that's what would happen if we go that far. If we don't do things now, the schools, in particular, and the sheriff's office, don't have time for proper planning when they have to start their New Years. And so I appreciate it, if people take their responsibility, understand that some things are not easy to do, and approve this budget as submitted.
Thank you, sir. Okay, it's time to take a vote. Clear the board.
We have a couple of issues here.
Okay, hang on. Oh, sorry.
No, it's all right.
Go ahead, Commissioner Waddell.
I'd like to amend the budget to reflect the, taking the penny off the tax increase for solid waste.
We're just going to come back and get out of town.
Well, that's my, that's my amendment. Is that your amendment?
Yes.
Commissioner Waddell, is there a second to Commissioner Waddell's amendment? Here are none, motion fails for lack of second. Is there a second on the question? Yeah, you do. Appreciate the comments, though. Is there a second on the call on the question? Second. All in favor of the-
It takes two-thirds.
All, let's go to the board and vote on the call to-
Two-thirds.
To vote on the original motion as presented. We're not passing the budget now, we're only voting on the motion to vote now.
If I can clarify that, you're, you're voting to-
The motion was, the motion on the floor was to pass the budget.
Yeah.
And we are voting on the call for the question.
That's off discussion. That was my point.
And it does not take-
Okay.
It doesn't take two-thirds, it does not.
Jay, can you clarify this for me? Call the question.
Please forgive me, Robert, but what I think you're saying, you're not making a motion, you're just asking the chairman to call for the question. The question is the motion made by Commissioner Mead. Am I correct?
Yeah. And you have to get a second on that, right, Jay?
No, he's just asking the chairman, it's a request from the chairman to-
Yeah, but you have to have a second on that motion, and we got a second, so now we're going to vote on the original motion, is what you're saying.
That's, you need to vote-
All right, so now, we're going to vote on, we're not voting on the question, that's done, we're going to vote on the motion. Clear the board. You don't have to vote on the question now that you had the second. Now, is the motion, yes is to accept 18.25 cents.
Eight cents in Oak Ridge.
I don't know what Oak Ridge is getting, but it's 18.25 cents. Okay? 18.25 cents, yes. No is you're not voting for an 18.25 cents. There's nine yes, seven no's, the motion passes. So now we need to take action and process this resolution that you have in front of Thank everyone for the debate, thank everybody for the discussion. Well, I appreciate it, but I really appreciate you and the Budget Committee, because it's a thankless job, and I do want to thank each one of the Budget Committee members for what you did. Appreciate all the dialogue and all that kind of good stuff. Next action, we can just close the meeting? Ah, we can sign it in a couple of weeks, so let's just move on, what do you think? Jay, come up here and make sure we're doing everything right.
You shouldn't have an appropriation resolution-
I got appropriation in front of me, yes, sir.
You have two resolutions in front of you.
Yes, sir. Now, quick question, what happens if the mayor vetoes this?
We'll come back at the next meeting and take an override vote.
Okay, just, just thought I'd ask that question in advance.
Majority or two-thirds?
Majority.
Several majorities.
Those need to be taken individually, sir.
Oh, each, talk to me now.
The taxing resolution, the appropriation-
I'll tell you what, let's take a break, it's been two hours plus, we'll come back in and finish the business, give people a chance to get home and get some bittles. Thank y'all for coming, we're going to take a quick, what do you think, McCamey, 10 minutes? 10 minute, 10-minute break, 10, it takes me 10 minutes to get out of my seat. budget back into session. All present, we're going to open it back up, as we all know, we just passed the budget as presented. Now we are to take up, we have a motion, Commissioner McCamey.
To approve the resolution, make an appropriation for various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Anderson County, Tennessee, for the year beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020. I so moved.
We have a motion, and that is for Resolution 19-6-762. We have a second by Commissioner Mead. Any further discussion on that motion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes, 13 yes, three no. I believe that concludes.
What else we got?
Can we have a second one?
My interpretation, tax levy was already done, but if you'd like to go ahead and re-vote on it, I'm happy to do so.
We did that.
Right.
Okay. 18.25 increase? And this is the funding resolution, so we should be good.
Well, if- It was stated that it was a taxing resolution. Can you make another motion and do the taxing resolution? Can you give that number out, Robbie?
Yes, sir.
Motion by Commissioner McCamey, second by Commissioner Mead. Commissioner McCamey, please read your motion, sir.
Get back to it here. A resolution fixing the tax levy in Anderson County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019.
Resolution 19-6-761.
I so moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's your second, sir. Commissioner Mead, any discussion on that? Commissioner White.
I noticed on this previous vote that some voted no, do we have a choice on this?
You always have a choice when you go to vote. I mean, I'm serious, you can vote yes or no, I mean. Yes, sir.
Okay, let me ask you, what if, what if none of us voted no, what would happen?
It wouldn't be funded.
Yes.
Okay, okay, I, I, okay, thank you.
Oh, good question. Any other questions? Let's go to the board. Motion passes, 12 yes, four no's. Now that concludes the business. Is that correct, Mr. Holbrook? Is there anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Isabel, hold on, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Jay gave us out this resolution, 13-12-476. Did everybody get that? Are we voting on that, or? That's what we passed last, 2013. Okay, well, just so the people at home knows, this is what we did in 2013, and it relates to the early conversation when I started about this, you know, the money that we didn't know that we're getting. Resolution, act, impose, reaffirm, and collect a litigation tax in all cases before the Criminal Circuit, Chancery, and General Sessions Courts pursuant to Tennessee law, provide for jail and courthouse construction, renovation, debt retirement, and to provide for computer-related hardware and software associated with collecting, receiving, and maintaining law enforcement records. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you. Any other question? Commissioner Vowles, I'll come back to you, Commissioner Mead, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Vowles.
Isabel's brought to us tonight, I guess my question would be, does this require further research? Do we need, and Jay may be able to answer these questions. Questions I have is, how long have we been collecting this? How much have we collected? Where is it now? Have we been using it? I mean, I've got a bunch of questions about this, that I still, I don't know if it need to go to operations or budget or where it need to go, but-
I think some of it, it's been there, but hadn't been collected.
Okay, so-
That's very good, but we're going to go ahead and comply with what Commissioner Scott wanted. What Rex is doing right now is he's going back, his office is working with my office and with Jeff Coles, we're looking at all the litigation taxes that we passed over the years, they're in various forms, private activities, seeing county commission resolution, we're going back and seeing what is effective right now, what's not, what's being assessed properly, what's entered into their computers. You've got various cases that could differ, various topics, and various amounts, and we're getting it all straight. Robbie's helping on this, and I worked with Angela today for a couple hours on it, but I would say by the time your Budget Committee next meets, we'll have a good idea of where we're at, and now, what you just read's passed, we just got to make sure it's being collected. And if you recall what was happening during that time, you have one circuit court clerk going out and another one coming in, so I can see how it happened. It's, there's no blame on anybody, it would've been easy to pass and not get it into the computer system. If you also recall, it was an issue with computers during that time. But Rex has done a good job, and we'll get it all together, and I'll report back at the next Budget Committee. That's where you did want it, Commissioner Scott, Budget Committee?
Yes, sir.
And we'll, we'll have an idea. And the other one that we know we have to reinstitute is the ASAP. That one had a sunset provision in it, Stephanie Strutner still needs that money, so you can consider whether or not. There's another one out there, community mediation that we passed, it was $2, we've already corrected that. We've already corrected that, and that was in the same one, wasn't it? If I'm not mistaken. If I'm not mistaken. Those are all being corrected. But I'll give you a list. I think we'll all feel good about it. We'll know exactly what we've passed, what form it is, what it applies to. And then the other question is that, one is, it says it applies to municipal courts if the county commission passes it. So we're pretty sure that's not being collected in some of the municipal courts we have here in the small cities. But anyway, we'll look into that and give you a report back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Vowles. Commissioner Mead.
I just want to say, I noticed that the, that the resolution that you gave us is not signed by the mayor. So when you're doing this looking, let's make sure that everything was appropriately passed. I realize these file copies often don't have the mayor's signature, but there's a lot of stuff she just doesn't sign at all. There's other things that she vetoes. I just have to make sure that it's passed.
Okay.
Okay, so she just didn't sign it. 10 days later, it goes into effect.
Any other discussions? Commissioner Isabel, did you say there's somebody out there? Did you have anything, Commissioner Isabel?
Yes, yes, yeah, one other thing. We talked earlier about the new internet sales tax that we're getting that we didn't use in this budget whatsoever. What I'd like for the Budget Committee to consider is to appropriating, I don't know how many cents or percentage of that tax, to a capital outlay going forward. So that's money we haven't had before when it comes in, is to, and I got that idea from Dr. Parrott.